Counselor President, myself, I'd like to first speak and then the board here if they would like to add on to it. So we'll go up to the presentation place. As you know, we're here to honor two of Everett Fireman's heroic deed that they performed a couple of weeks ago in the saving life of a distressed lady on the 10th, 11th floor at the Sacro Plaza. It's an honor for me because I know both of the gentlemen, it's also an honor for the board here to have two heroes out of over 100 heroes. These two just happen to be special this year in all the firemen heroes in our, you know, our eyes. When we heard about this, the first thing we said is we have to acknowledge our homegrown heroes and that's what we're here to do tonight. Before I give any kind of citations, I would like to know if anybody here would like to speak also on this matter, the council?
I could do it right from the chair, Mr. President. I've known both these gentlemen, very, very great guys, family people in the city. I've known Rocco since we were up in DeBlase these days, I can remember those days. So, that being said, it does take, the job itself does take a lot of pressure and it puts a lot of pressure on these individuals and the job itself, but to actually go out on the 11th floor of a building and rescue someone, that takes great, great amounts of pressure to do so. And you have to be courageous and every single one of these people that are wearing the uniform, including the two that stepped out on that ledge that night, are very courageous and they deserve a great applaud, not only from, you know, the city government, the citizens, but as they received it at the governor's level. So, we're here tonight to actually applaud these two gentlemen for doing a great job. So, I wanted to say thank you on behalf of myself, but on behalf of the colleagues, if anyone else has anything to say, please by all means, anyone? Counselor Capone?
Thank you, if I may, and I'll be brief because we all share the same sentiments. We've got quality men and women in uniform for the city, fire and police, and you look at 350 some odd towns in the state and we've got two firefighters here coming from the city. So you represent the city well every day, all of you do, and I'm just proud that the rest of the state got to see the quality people that we have in the city. So thank you for everything you do on a daily basis.
Counselor Hanlon.
Just wanted to say, gentlemen, we're very proud of you. It's not often that we get a chance to say this to anybody, but we are very, very proud of you and I think that answers it for all of us. It's a job that you do, that we expect you to do, but yet we're so very, very happy to hear that we got some wonderful, wonderful results out of an incident like this and so we thank you very much.
Is there anybody else from the board? Mr. Mayor, I think.
Before I read the citation, Mayor Di Maria would like to also extend his congratulations to the two recipients tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have the pleasure of being with them about a week ago over in Boston and again, thank you for your hard work, what you do every day to the whole department, but especially to you two this evening. This is a great honor to be recognized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and it was actually a great afternoon and I know none of us here probably knew about it, I myself was knowing about it about the last minute, but it was a great ceremony. I encourage you all to go there next year, hopefully we have a couple more courageous firefighters at that event from Everett, but it was a great day and a great tribute to you, to both of you. We know why Joe does it because his brain cells are a little out there, but Rocco, you got a couple of young kids at home and, but no, you got two of the finest guys in the department, two guys that I've gotten to know a long time and it happened to love and respect. So congratulations to both of you and to your families.
And also congratulations to your families also. You should be very honored and proud of both of those brave gentlemen. Here's a citation. Be it known to all that the Everett City Council and its honored mayor hereby offer their sincerest congratulations to Honored firefighter Rocco Adriati and Honored firefighter Joseph Quinn. The proud and momentous occasion of being awarded one of this year's 10th State Meritorious Conduct Awards from Governor Patrick. Congratulations to you guys and we're really proud of you. Guys, come up here. If you were the chief, would you like to say a few words, something to you? Chief?
Chief Butler.
I just want to congratulate both of these guys for a job well done and, I mean, all of them out here do a good job every day, but this was something a little above and beyond. Congratulations.
Thanks, everybody, for showing up and I love working for the city of Everett and I love being an Everett fireman.
Thank you also for everyone to showing up. It was a great, great day the other day, a memory that I'll live with forever and I was lucky enough to have Joe with me to help me rescue this girl. Thank you, thank you Chief Butler, thank you Mr. Mayor and everyone else. Chief, would you, could you get a picture of the chief with his, to jump hang on one second?
[inaudible]
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 All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose at this time. You will be asking, let clerk read number one, please.
Sure.
Item number one is an order sponsored by Council Michael K. Marquez as President to all persons interested in the public hearing on the ordinance to the order to establish a City of Everett administrative code.
At this time in the public hearing, I'll ask everyone out there if they are in favor or opposed. I'll ask three times for each way. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody in favor of this order. Is anybody in favor of this order? Is anybody in favor of this order? Seeing none, that part of the public hearing is done. Is anybody opposed to this order? Is anybody opposed to this order? Is anybody opposed to this order? Seeing none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made, second to close public hearing. Matters before you.
Fable action on the order as amended.
Second. Motion made for fable order on, um, order as amended. Uh, roll call vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
This order has been enrolled.
Item number two is an order sponsored by Counsel Marquez as President to all persons interested in the public hearing for an auto repair mechanical shop for Pasquale Tedesco. The third, GBA Mail Services Incorporated, any trim on street.
You have a motion to open to, uh, public hearing.
Motion open to public hearing.
Motion made, second to open to public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose at this time. I'll ask three times, uh, who, uh, if anybody's in favor of this ordinance or this order, actually, and anybody who's opposed to it. At this time, I'd like to ask, is anybody in favor of this order? Would you like to speak? Uh, no. Uh, is anybody in favor of this order?
Name, address.
Uh, is anybody in favor of this order? Uh, would you like to leave your name? Uh, how are they gonna leave it?
Dr. DiOrio.
Address.
Okay, that part is finished. Is anybody opposed to this ordinance? This order? Is anybody opposed to this order? Is anybody opposed to this order? Seeing none, that part of the public hearing is closed. Ladies and gentlemen, it's before you.
Fable action on the order.
Second. Motion made, second for fable action.
Chairman on the order? On the order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Through you, our clerk. Michael, do we have all the papers in order?
All paperwork is in order.
Normal restrictions applied, too?
Normal restrictions applied.
They're aware of the...
From the previous, yes, from the previous only.
No, is this a new license?
Yes.
Our clerk, uh, read the, uh, roll call vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero, nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, your license is passed, you're transferred. Good luck down there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, clerk, read item three.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Marquez as President to all parties interested in the petition for national grid. The following are the streets and highways referred to in Plan 17633923, Main and Bradford Street. National grid to install two to four inch conduits from MHB 508 on Main Street to P2110 on Bradford Street.
Let's take the motion.
Make a motion to open public hearing.
Motion made, second to, uh, open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, clerk, at this time, I'll ask three times if anybody's in favor of this order. Is anyone in favor of this order? Uh, is anyone in favor of this order? Is anyone in favor of this order? We have your, uh, name, sir? Press the green, yes.
Good evening, uh, my name is Phil Corsi, engineer, national grid, Malden. Uh, petitioning for the conduit. It is part of a large project to eliminate the indoor facilities at our Glendale substation. And, uh, we need this facility to connect from our Everett 37 substation to the Glendale Station.
This going to get rid of, uh, which station?
Glendale 6.
What was Glendale 6?
On Broadway.
On Broadway? That big building will be eliminated?
Uh, the equipment in the building will be eliminated. The, um, as a safety issue, the building will remain.
Okay. Uh, do we have any questions, uh, Counselor?
What will remain in that building?
Oh, oh, I forget, no.
I won't, I won't ask that question on you.
At this time, let me finish the public hearing, okay? Then we'll, we'll ask questions. I, uh, mixed up on that. Is anybody opposed to this petition? Anybody opposed to this petition? Is anybody opposed to this petition? Seeing none, that part of public hearing is open? Close. Close. It's closed, yeah, close. Okay. Matters before you, right here.
I'm, I'm, um, I'm sorry, no, you can't ask any questions.
No, you can't now.
No, you can't now, public hearing's over.
Okay, now the, as soon as the public participation is closed, then we can ask questions. Is that correct? Okay. Do we invite the gentleman back up again?
Uh, yes, uh, make a motion to invite Mr. Corsi up. Motion made, second to invite Mr. Corsi up. Corsi, uh, questions? Counselor McKinnon?
Uh, what's going to be remaining in the building?
The, um, the structure houses antiquated, um, switches and equipment. Much of it will not be used. It will still remain and have some controls and will be adding a modern type switch gear, uh, so that power will still be available in, in and out of the building.
So there will be some sort of setup in there for grid type, um, power going in and out?
Yes.
And it'll be maintained by, of course, your people?
Yes.
Uh, will that be, will that always, uh, will that be monthly or will that be weekly or will that be daily? How will it be maintained?
Um, it, yeah, it, it's currently an unmanned station now and it, and it will, will remain that way. So it'll be, um, monitored from our dispatch center and then, um, maintenance and inspection as required.
Okay, so on, on a monthly basis, we could anticipate someone coming in and taking a look, seeing how everything's running?
Yes.
If there's any hazard or any type of problems in there, they'll know about it?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be people in the building to take, uh, log readings.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counsel DeFlorio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what are the consequences if we don't approve something like this?
Well, this is, this is for the conduit and, um, we had petitioned roughly a year ago for the other pieces that we needed. Uh, there wasn't an available pipe here. It was used for something else. That's why we're petitioning this. This is a multi-million dollar project. We've been planning, engineering this for years and we are actually in construction on the project right now.
Thank you.
Counsel Delasola.
How you doing? You say your station's on Broadway in Everett, correct?
Yes.
And you want to run your pipeline from Main Street to Bradford Street?
Yes.
That's totally the other side of Everett.
We're coming out of Everett 37 to provide the power. So Everett, the Everett 37 substation sits in the backyard of our Malden office on 170 Medford Street. So the, the power will be coming underground down Willis Ave. And then it'll be, uh, going overhead on Bellingham and Bradford, Bradford Street. And then it'll, uh, go underground at Ferry and then tie into the, uh, Broadway Station.
Are you planning to start that this year or in the spring?
Uh, this year.
And how long would it take? Roughly? I won't hold you to it.
Well, um, the, the conduit will, will do next week, but, but electrically, um, we plan to do some overhead work during the winter and then the underground work will follow in the spring.
Okay. Aye, thank you.
Uh, Counsel Hanlon, did you, did you want us to, uh, 'cause I know Counsel Sani wanted to say something. Both? Uh, Counsel Sani.
Are they gonna affect any of the residents in the area, losing any power or anything while you're doing this transition?
Uh, these are, um, these are large circuits and we have plans in place to try to cut over as much as we can as, as we go that we won't be taking large area outages. If there are any outages, uh, that we need to take with, with customers, it'll be well planned. If there's commercial outage, we'll work with the businesses.
And you'll let them know ahead of time when the work's starting so they'll be prepared? Especially if there's something in food and...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counsel Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you, sir, uh, the Main Street and Bradford Street, are we talking about doing work in the streets or in the sidewalks?
Um, we've been working with, um, uh, the city's consultant and the mayor's office. In this case, they asked us to go up the sidewalk.
Up the sidewalk, so on both Main Street and then on around the corner to Bradford Street, we're both in the sidewalks?
Yes.
So no, no street tie-up at all?
No.
Okay, and one other thing, there's no poles involved in this at all, are there?
Uh, no, this is, this is underground.
But so, nothing coming up?
No new, no new pole location.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do we have any questions, Mr. Corsi?
I, I'm sorry.
Uh, Counsel DeFlorio.
Um, is this something that has to be voted on right away? Uh, if, if we hold it up for a couple of weeks, is that a problem?
Uh, y- yes, uh, due to the timing of the winter moratorium in, in digging. We, we were late getting it, uh, to the council and, um, we need to, um, hopefully receive approval and so we can do this next week and, uh, stay out of the winter moratorium. You know, as, as the asphalt plants are closing.
So this is very imperative that you get this vote tonight. If you got it at the end of the month, it would, uh...
It would delay us and could delay us over the winter.
Aye, thank you.
Uh, Counsel McGonigal.
Just, let's not delay this. The gentleman's here to tell us that he's gonna get rid of that station on Broadway. There was a horrific accident years ago there. I'm happy to hear that it's being taken away. Vote on it tonight, let these, let these gentlemen dig this and let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Fable action on the order.
Second.
Motion made, second on the order.
Excuse, excuse, Mr. Corsi, thank you.
Roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, the petition has, uh, passed and, uh, good luck doing your work. Before we, uh, before we go into the public participation, we have a, um, I don't know if we can do this, we have a, uh, a, a, a promotion tonight. Could we possibly take that while the people are here? So could, make a motion to take six off somebody?
Some more.
So, second, motion made, second to take item number six. Clerk, please read.
Item number six is, is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael K. Marquez as President, subject confirmation by the Honorable City Council. He might promote Scott Stahlbaum to the position of Sergeant in the Everett, City of Everett Police Department.
Second motion. Uh, we have, the mayor, would you like to speak on this or the chief? We'll take a roll call vote on it.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President. According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreed with the rules.
Agreed with the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Lord witnesses in God.
Lord witnesses in God.
The City of Everett.
The City of Everett.
And I'll be God. And I'll be God. And I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
And I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And I'll, I'll be God.
And I'll be God.
And I'll be God. And I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
And I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
In the United States of America.
In the United States of America.
And I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And I'll be God.
And I'll be God.
And I'll be God.
It'll take about a five-minute recess, okay? And we'll take the pitches. Clerk, read item number four.
Item number four is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Marquez as President to hold a ten-minute public participation period. Second.
Motion made, second to accept, motion to accept the public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. At this time, if there's any issue out there that you'd like to speak on, uh, do we have a, excuse me, do we have a list?
Uh, Mr. President, I have, uh, I do have a list and it's, uh, five. I have five, uh, people that wanna speak. Uh, John Santa Suazo, I hope I pronounced that.
Santa Suazo? Mr. Santa Suazo?
Yes.
Uh, would you like to come before us here, please?
Motion, I have, Mr. Santa Suazo come before us, please.
Motion made, second, have Mr. uh, Santa Suazo come before us. All in favor? I oppose, Mr. Suazo, uh, have a seat, yes.
All right, um, my name's Johnson Aswasso. I've been born here and raised in Everett. Um, I've been living on Ashton Street for the past thirty years and, um, all during that time, Yarmouth Street, which connects Ashton Street to Coolidge Street, has been a, a throughway. And now after all these years, they're trying to make it a dead end. Uh, even though I'm told that there are laws on the book to protect, uh, the neighbors and it prevents, uh, any throughway street from becoming a dead-end street if it's been a throughway for a number of years. It's just been a convenient way for us all to get through the neighborhood for all these years and a safe way for parents to pick up their children and drop them off. It just seems a bit inconsiderate for hundreds of other Everett residents and the danger it imposes, um, for all those extra residents to have to go to the top of Ashton Street and have to inch out and edge out to take a left on Ferry Street. That's an accident waiting to happen. Now, when I mentioned that to the, um, the city solicitor, um, she said, oh, we could make it no left turn on Ashton Street, top of Ashton Street. At this point, I was a little upset, I, please, don't do that. That's gonna make a mess. I don't know if you know the neighborhood, but it's just gonna make a mess here. That would mean to get the Ferry Street from Ashton Street to go to Everett, to Glendale Square, anywhere, you'd have to go up the fer, uh, top of Ashton Street, then you'd have to take a right on, on Ferry Street, then you'd have to take a right on Ridge Street, which has a light there and a light on Belmont Street, and then you'd have to go down to Ridge Street and you can't take a right on Edith Street 'cause it's a one-way during school, so now you have to go all the way to the end to the Malden Projects, take a right on, on Bryan Street, then another right on Albium Street, which is a two-way, which traffic parked on both sides, then take a left on Edith Street, then a right on Cowson. Then we get to the top of the street and you take a left on Ferry. So the neighborhoods were quite concerned, were afraid that we're gonna wake up the next morning and find a do not or a no left turn on the top of Ferry Street. We had good reason to feel that because that morning, the, the city came down and dropped these ugly Jersey barriers in front of our home. Uh, I look out the window and it looks like a combat zone. Uh, disgusting. And I know the mayor mentioned that if this goes through, 'cause it's only a trial error, that he would make, uh, he would replace those barriers with these cement poles. Well, I'm sorry, even though they're not as ugly as the Jersey barriers, they're still ugly. They're not residential looking, they look, they just look hideous. It looks, makes the neighborhood look weird, it looks more industrious. And it's gonna lower the value of our homes. So now, when I, when I, um, spoke to, um, well, in fact, when they first dropped these down, I, I got a message from Steve at the mayor's office, and Steve has been very helpful, uh, 'cause an incident, there was an incident before that, a few weeks, where homemade signs were made on four-by-eight sheets of plywood and put on both sides of, um, Yarmouth Street to block it off. Now, we all called the mayor's office and Steve had a police officer and some city workers come down and remove all this. Now, um, um, what do I gotta say? At that, okay, at that point, Steve, um, um, did tell me that, don't, don't worry at all, there's no way that they can change anything on Yarmouth Street without connect, without talking to the residents on Ashton Street in Coolidge, 'cause we're, um, we're a butters. But obviously, the message was sort of like, sorry, John, i- it seems that I was wrong. Uh, and that he didn't understand what was going on too much, that he said, I could call the city solicitor and she could explain it better. Well, she couldn't explain it any better, she pretty much just said that we, there's nothing we could do. And I said, there must be something we can do. And she said, yeah, you could hire a lawyer. And I says, why doesn't the city get a lawyer? And she mentioned that I am the city lawyer. Well, at that point, I hung up and called some of the councilmen, many of them here, the councilors, talked to John Hanlon and Leo McKinnon here, everybody's been very helpful. I talked to them and they were very, they didn't know anything about this. I'm sure none of yous knew anything about this. And I was under the impression that any laws like this that are made, it go, get passed as by you. But obviously, it wasn't. And then when I did speak to the mayor, a few weeks later, um, I told him that some of the councilmen told me that this could be illegal. And I was quoting something, but he said, uh, he said, you know, councilmen tell you what they wanna hear. And I had to bite my tongue, uh, I was just trying to be respectful. I don't wanna tell you how many times we were promised to have Ashton Street done over, uh, although the mayor did promise me two weeks ago that Ashton Street is gonna be done this year or definitely by the beginning of next year. So we'll see. But as I told him, that wasn't our concern, it was the dead on, 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 on Yarmouth Street.
Mr. Santa Suazo, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
What was the reason for putting them there?
The, the dead ends, huh? The people on the street wanna make it a dead end. That's all, I, you know, they just want, now, I was on the, they can't do that. Now, there were, it was...
I never heard anything, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, that's just all, it was just that they, um, for whatever, they wanted, they wanted to cut the traffic down. Now, there's, if you know, there's only, there's only like four homes on Ashton Street and there's four in the corners. And some of those people just moved in there. I'm sure, uh, they'd be very surprised, unaware that that, that the street has been a two-way for over fifty years. They just made it a one-way not too long back. And they're not aware that they did that to cut the traffic down. And I don't even think it was legal how they made it a one-way, uh, but we didn't even complain. We said, let them do it, they've been complaining, keep them happy, it'll cut the traffic down. Now they're saying, oh, they move too fast on the road. It's like, well, get some speed bumps. You could put some speed bumps down there and that will definitely stop them from racing down, down Yarmouth Street. Never mind now that they don't have Yarmouth Street to turn down, they floor it from the bottom of Ashton Street to the top of Ferry. Anyone will tell you that. It's just crazy. But I understand where they're coming from. They wanted, they want these streets to be, uh, you know, safe and we all do, like, but there are other solutions, is what I'm saying. You know, we should try to work together, find some other solution that works for all of us. That's all. All I'm saying is like, don't make it a one-way street. It's cra, it's unfair, it's inconsiderate, it's dangerous, it's gonna lower the value of our home. So we ask you, and there's over a hundred people that signed here, we say, please, to the mayor, the mayor's office and to all you councilmen, if you have any say, please, don't make it a one-way. Just return our neighborhood to the way it's been for the past fifty to a hundred years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santa Suazo. Do, do you have our signatures there? Mr. Santa Suazo, do you have signatures there?
I'm sorry?
Do you have signatures there?
Yes.
Maybe we can get a copy of them for us. Thank you, uh, we have another...
Joe Senna.
Joe Senna? Mr. Senna? Hi, Ms. Senna, how are you?
Doing well. Name's Joe Senna, I'm a homeowner at, uh, 38 Coolidge Street. Um, thank you very much, members of the council, council president, for allowing me a few moments to speak tonight, first and foremost. Uh, the, that house has been in my family for forty years since 1974. I purchased it, uh, about twelve years ago, so I've been there for the better part of my life. For the vast majority of the time I was there, Yarmouth Street was in fact a two-way street. The neighborhood was also very different. The city was also very different. We didn't have the population we had, we didn't have the number of cars that we have. And quite simply, we didn't have the problem with the school, which has really exacerbated the neighbor, the situation in the neighborhood with a lot of traffic since the Lafayette was relocated to Edith, uh, Edith Street Park location. We made a decision, I'm in a butter. There are four houses on Yarmouth Street with Yarmouth Street addresses, there are four additional houses that are considered a butters, two on Ashton, two on Coolidge. I'm on Coolidge, the side of my house abuts Yarmouth Street. Yarmouth Street is thirty-two feet wide, for those of you who don't know. It goes in an east-to-west, west-to-east fashion. At the... At thirty-two feet wide, we are not allowed to have sidewalks, because it would be too narrow to park cars and allow safe access of any other motor vehicles, including emergency equipment. With that said, you're in a school zone, there's a number of children that are walking and utilizing that street. They cannot walk on that street safely with traffic moving in both directions, not even one direction, because there are no sidewalks. To further complicate the situation, we have a number of children that now live as abutters. We have a number of elderly people, I think it's seven. We have two that are legally deaf, and we have one handicapped child. You add traffic, you add parked cars, you add peril. Now, I understand the situation, that it's inconvenient for a lot of people to have this as a dead end. I live on the corner of Coolidge and Yarmouth. It's so much easier for me to go up Ashton, take a left onto Cool, onto Yarmouth, go into Coolidge. It is inconvenient for me to go to Ferry and come all the way down. But we fail as a city, and we fail as a community, if we allow convenience to take precedent over the safety of the residents of our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much, Mr. Senna. We have a few people, thank you. Counselor?
Jim Fiorello.
Mr. Fiorello?
Fiorello.
Mr. Fiorello? How you doing tonight?
I'm doing good. Jim Fiorello, ten Yarmouth Street, Everett.
Thank you, Jim.
Hi, everybody. I'm here to represent Yarmouth Street this evening, and would like to say a few things and really not mention any names. Yarmouth Street was always a two-way street, until about eight years ago, when we legally went in front of the Traffic Commission and had it made a one-way. The one-way was coming up Ashton Street and taking a left onto Coolidge was the one-way. A week after we got this done, and the signs were put up, someone from Ashton Street came up the street and took a sazal and took the pole down, which was legally belonging to the city. We realized there was a problem, so we decided to go back to the Traffic Commission, and we had Yarmouth Street done a one-way coming down Coolidge. You couldn't take a left onto Coolidge. That's been like that for eight years. However, at the end of the street, there was two stops, two signs that said, do not enter. The problem that we're having is the fact that, when people come down Coolidge Street, they don't want to go down to Edith Street to take their left to right. They want to take a left onto, to Yarmouth Street. Yarmouth Street's only about a hundred and thirty feet long. When they realize what they've done, they speed up doing fifty, sixty miles an hour. Now, my father's legally deaf. He used to walk up and down Yarmouth Street. He stopped because he almost got hit by a car numerous times. I was in the middle of the summer, before all this happened, where we went legally to the city of Everett to have that closed off. I was coming out the side of my house to water my front lawn. And as I came out, I seen this car coming down the wrong way, screeched on the brakes, and I hear this kid scream. And I go out to the front, and I see my next-door neighbor's kid, who's ten years old, on the ground with a car this far from him. And he was screaming, and he was cut up. When I yelled at the girl, she took off and went up the street on Ashton Street. The problem that we're having is, yes, it's two ways, used to be. It became a one-way, but it's still not a one-way. Because one day on a Sunday, my father sat in his, in the kitchen, in four hours, thirty-seven cars came down the street going the wrong way. Thirty-seven. Look it, I've been watching all of you for fifteen years. I watch every single meeting. I know more about what's going on in the city of Everett than a lot of people. The number-one thing you talk about all the time is public safety. This is a public safety issue. I would have brought more people here this evening, but I can tell you this. We were outside in the front, I'm retired, so I get all the time in the world. I saw a handicapped child getting off the bus with one of my neighbor's kids next to the handicapped child, and this, what I call the hurry-up moms at the school, came down up Ashton Street, took a left, and wouldn't wait until that, the lights were off, and the person was safely moved out in her wheelchair, and went right around them and almost hit her. This has happened several times. So we're asking you to understand our predicament. You've got a street, and by the way, up above us is Falmouth, dead end. Down below us is Cumberland, dead end. Yarmouth Street was, the first house in Yarmouth Street was nineteen twenty-four. It was a dead end. That, my father, who built the house in my next, my cousin's house next door, he's the one that paid to have the street paved, because it was a private way. The city did not recognize it as a street. The state didn't want to recognize it as a street, so the only way we could get it paved, pay it ourselves. We paid, paid to have that street taken care of. The city don't pay to take care of it. Underneath, they have to take care of because of the pipes and all that, but when something goes wrong with a porthole and everything, I go out and I repair it. City does not pay, repair it. Now, I apologize that it's an inconvenience for the few on Ashton Street, because it's not an inconvenience for the halfway up on Ashton Street, because they can't come down on Yarmouth. I apologize for the inconvenience for the few on Coolidge Street, because the only ones that can use it are the ones halfway up the street, and very seldom do they use it. This is a public safety issue. I'm worried about nine elderly, two are deaf, handicapped child, and speeding, and the police cannot enforce them taking a left off of Coolidge, going down a one-way. I was told that. So I would appreciate you to research this more. We did not do this out of spite. We did it out of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Paul Vergariel?
Paul Vergariel, sixty-two Ashton Street. I understand exactly where the gentleman's coming from. You know, it is an inconvenience for me, but I can handle it. But the city also has to do something about the corner of Ferry. You go up there, corner of Ferry, you can't look to your left, you can't look to your right. You're supposed to be twenty feet away from the corner, not enforced, and you get a fifteen-minute loading zone for the coal-cut factory. You've got the extra-heavy traffic from the school. They always want to cut up any way they can, like he says, the hurry-up moms. They pass me, I'm trying to go up my own street, and they're trying to pass me on, on Edith Street, trying to go home. The barriers, I think, it is a safety issue as far as emergency vehicles. Ambulants comes down, the fire department comes down. They usually come down Ashton, not down Coolidge, to get to Ashton. Now, if they have to go somewhere in between, and when they forget that it's there, the barrier's there, or even the poles are there, what's going to happen? Somebody comes driving up the street, late at night, doesn't realize it's there, takes the left. I know exactly what he's talking about, because they've done it to me. I've gone down Yarmouth and had somebody come the wrong way. But it's the whole traffic area around the school and on Ferry that has to be taken care of. Like, when they closed down Belmont Street to do the repaving, the traffic was backed up to my house at sixty-two, trying to get onto Ferry. And they can't get onto Ferry, because they can't see to get onto Ferry. It's a safety issue around the whole neighborhood, not just his street. I agree with him totally, but it's not just his street. It's got the school traffic and at the corner itself on Ferry Street. And if we can all come together on a fair solution, then, you know, I hope we can. But it's a whole traffic issue around that street totally. You put do-not-enter signs on Edith Street coming off of Ridge during school hours, why don't you just put a do-not-enter sign on a, you know, except for residents, you know, figure out something? You know, it is a safety issue in the whole area. They speed up Ashton Street, they go through Yarmouth Street, but like I say, on a safety issue, those barriers there for emergency vehicles, I think, you know, is a problem.
Paul, thank you. Barry Wister? Hi, Barry.
My name's actually John Worcester. I live at fifty-eight Ashton Street for the past twenty-eight years. And I just have a list of, just points I want to make, not really discussion or anything. There's a parking problem there within the butter on, on Yarmouth Street and Ashton Street. The guy's in the butter. He doesn't want anyone parking near his house on the side of his house, on Yarmouth Street. There's been windows smashed there, tires have been slashed. My daughter's boyfriend had his paint gouged right, right through the hood, because it's fiberglass hood. Dish liquid poured into his gas tank by this resident. Doesn't want anyone parking on his street. He never said anything about people speeding. I've never seen anyone speeding on this street, ever. I've never seen anyone whipping it down. You can't go, this street is so short, you couldn't go, go in that fast, that, that, that quick. It's only a hundred and thirty feet long, he said. How can you go sixty miles an hour? But it's a parking problem. The guy, this guy does not want anyone parking on his street. It's his street, he owns it, he thinks he does. Non-residents, non-residents, once in a while, at two o'clock in the morning, they may come here. They may park on the side of this guy's house, because they go up to Ashton Street. There's nowhere to park at that time. You need a sticker and this and that. And maybe they're visiting someone at the neighborhood at two o'clock in the morning, they park there, they come out in the morning, their windshield's are smashed, their tires are slashed by this, this resident that thinks he owns that street. Late night, due to lack of, the barriers they have right now, it's an eyesore. It's a total eyesore. You guys should just drive up there and take a look. Drive by, and you'll see. They should be removed immediately. They should, this is, it looks like a ghetto down there now. I just want to say that if we lose this battle right here to keep this street open, to keep it a throughway, not one dime should be spent out of the taxpayers' money to do any improvements on that street, to close it off. These people want their own street, their private little way, let them pay for it. No money should be spent there. Snow, when it snows, if one person goes up, goes up Ashton Street, he gets near the top, one person doesn't make it, starts spinning their tires, they don't make it to the top on one, one swoop, everyone behind them's stuck. Nobody gets up there for hours. They're back and forth, they're trying to shovel, it's crazy. And like the other guy said, too, you cannot see, when you go up to the top to Ferry Street, you got to go six inches at a time, because you cannot see who's coming this way, going into Everett. You can't see around the corner. There's always someone on the corner. Even in the police department, a lot of people get their subs there at the coal-cut factory. They're parked right on the corner. You can't see around anything. You go six inches at a time and creep out there, or you're going to get nailed. No clean light of sight on Ferry Street. Yeah, okay, and the guy there in the corner there, he seems to have, Vietnam veteran seems to have some kind of problems and stuff, you know, with smashing these cars up. And he even did my, my daughter's boyfriend's guy, he paid him fifteen hundred dollars. We took him to court, he pleaded guilty, whatever. And he, he's the one, he's really the one that wants the street cut off. He wants to own the street, he doesn't want anyone parking on it, he doesn't want anyone driving down it. And for all these things he's done over the years, he shouldn't be rewarded by getting his way. It's mostly him. The corner of Ashton and Yarmouth, right on the corner, right there, he abuts it. And these are just points I wanted to make, I don't know if anyone else made them, but that's it. That's all I can say.
Barry, thank you very much for your points.
Seeing no other speakers, I make a motion to close public participation.
Motion made second to close public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion made second to suspend the rules, take item twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Clerk lead, item twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two, resolution sponsored by Council John Leo McKinnon, someone from the mayor's office for the next meeting to explain two Jersey barriers on Yarmouth.
What I'd like to do with this is refer to government affairs and public safety, and invite the abutters to this street. Anyone that would like to come to that meeting, I hope that they would be invited. Anyone that spoke tonight, also have someone representing the mayor's office there, as well as our city solicitor, and also traffic. That's in the form of a motion.
Motion, in sec...
She has an under motion.
Excuse me, yes, Council Hanlon.
Information only to anybody that may be, how many people are on that petition that was signed?
Five.
And what was the name of the petition? How was it read? Oh, Michael, can you read that?
No, no. There was a hundred on one.
No cross-communication, please. I'll let the clerk answer. What does it say in the top, Mike, is what the...
Yes. We, the residents of Everett, who have signed below, strongly object to the making of Yarmouth Street a dead end, feel that after many years of it being a throughway, is inconsiderate?
Good enough. How many people?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Four pages, folks. About a hundred people.
So the motion would be to invite those people that you have there that had signed on to the signatures, invite the people that are on the street, as well as members from the mayor's office, traffic, city solicitor, and that should be fine.
Okay, so we want to form a motion, we want to send this, are we going to send it to traffic?
No, it's going to public safety.
Motion made to second to send to government operations and public safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, on the motion?
We should also, because this is going to go to a committee meeting, we need to find out what questions are going to be asked at that committee from this body, because otherwise, they won't be asked, and you can't ask questions that aren't presented to them. So we should ask other questions that should be asked of those people that we're going to invite, especially from the city. And if I could start, I would like to ask the Traffic Commission to let us know what their involvement was with this thing as a, as a history, not, not for one day, but for, before it started to where we are right now, from the Traffic Commission.
If there's, if there's any other further councilors that would have a question of this, I would please ask that you do so now, so when it goes before the committee, we can actually have that presented at committee for evidence.
I would also like to find out who exactly owns the street. Is it the petitioners? Is it a person? Is it the abutters to the center of the street, from corner to corner, where was it? And I believe that a portion of that street still belongs to the city of Everett. So I would like to find that out also, if a portion of that street, I think it's a side that, is it Ashton, is it Coolidge Street?
It's Ashton and Coolidge.
Coolidge, it's on Coolidge Street end, I believe. Okay? See who owns that, that section on the end of Coolidge Street that belongs to the city of Everett. I would also like to find out if this is private property, if it is private property, I would like to find out from whatever officers involved in the city, is why would the city of Everett go down and put, if it was a city, because I don't know if it was the city of Everett, why they would put Jersey barriers down there at the city's cost, if it's a private street? If it's a public street, then, then don't have to ask that question, but I need to find that out, if it's a private street.
So he considers who owns the street, who really instructed them to bring those down? That's the issue. I believe...
I had asked several questions prior to this meeting on cost, who had brought them down, if there was any man hours from the city, and I wanted those specific questions answered. But I think that it should be more for debate, because it seems like it's a more debatable item, and it should go to committee for debate.
Would you have any questions out there?
I'm still, I still have a question. And I would also like to find out, sometime in the early seventies, I think it was, where the street was opened up, what order, resolution, whatever it was, that opened that street, that allowed that street to be opened? Okay? And that would be my, my questions.
Yeah, if you have any other questions, just submit to, Mike, and if any of the petitioners out there that were here tonight, call up your councilors, and we can submit them for you, if there's something you want to know, okay? I mean, you know, we'll, you know, we'll get it done and see what's going, what's the issue, why it shut off, and, I mean, it's got to be a purpose or something, so hopefully we'll find out the answer and keep, keep everybody happy, okay? hopefully we'll find out the answer and keep, keep everybody happy, okay?
Thank you all.
Yeah, yeah.
So we had a motion out there in second to send us to, uh, the government, government operations, public service, public safety. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We'll have the information for that.
Item number five. Item number five is an order sponsored by-
If, if we could, I'd ask that we suspend the rules, take number 19 from the table. I believe there's a representative from National Grid in the audience.
Motion made second to suspend the rules, take item 19 from the calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Clerk read item 19.
Item number 19 is a resolution sponsored by Councilor Capone that a representative from National Grid appeared this evening to explain the delay in addressing malfunctioning of streetlights on Lower Broadway and on Sweets to Circle.
I'm hoping to invite Mr. Cameron up.
Second motion.
Motion made to invite Mr. Cameron, and all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Cameron, how are you tonight? Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cameron, thank you very much for, for appearing this evening. I've got the pieces on this calendar to talk about lights that have been out for quite some time. And I know that when you get to rotaries and Parkway, you're probably dealing with different levels of red tape. But my concern is that two lights in particular that I had called back in June, it was pole number 1,001 and 1,002 on Lower Broadway. I had spoken, well, I left a, a phone message for you on your cellphone, and I had spoken to you in June about a light on Burdette Street in Co-, in cooperation with my counselor, Leo McKinnon. At the time in June, you instructed me to go through the mayor's office, which I've done. And I don't know what, if anything, has, has been accomplished on that. I have called the mayor's office on a couple of occasions, and I've actually left messages on your phone on two occasions without a return call. So I don't know what the best way to get a light fixed is. I went through Ward 1, and I'm glad you're here because I'm gonna hand you two pages, 30 lights in Ward 1 that are out, de facto. And poles 1,001, 1,002 on Lower Broadway, they've been out for about two and a half months. And my concern now is it's getting darker earlier because of daylight savings. We're getting into the winter months where roads get icy and more difficult to, to travel. There are quite a few lights out on the Parkway, there are a ton of lights out on Sweets to Circle, and it, it's, you know, it's a public safety issue. I don't know why it's taken so long, I'd love to hear why, and I'd like to know why I didn't get a return call.
I apologize for the unreturned call. I, I do remember I was speaking with you back, you know, several months ago. I know Burdette Street's a brand-new light. And I'll have to check as to why that's not in yet. I know it's a process, you know, we have to go through to get that installed light.
What, if, if I could, I'm sorry, to interrupt you one second. The reason why Burdette is such a concern, it's very dark, and a young man was held up at gunpoint.
Okay.
And we want to get some illumination in the area for public safety. I should have mentioned that when I was talking about it, so I apologize for cutting you off. But I'll let you get back to your statement.
So that, yeah, um, because that, there's no light there right now, correct?
Right.
Okay, all right. As far as the, as Broadway is concerned, we are aware, because when I got the notice to appear, I had asked at all of Broadway, all of Ferry Street, all of Main Street, and all of Chelsea Street. Those are the main streets where we, they tend to be aluminum poles, all right, which are on main streets, they're difficult to repair without police details. The traffic is getting, you know, as we heard someone mention here earlier, you know, there are more and more traffic concerns now. So try to repair those lights during the day or even at night, it, it can be unsafe, blocking the streets and so forth. So we are gonna try to attempt to do this more on a quality basis, where we send a crew out at night with a detail. In fact, we're working tonight, we worked on Friday night as well, to try to get those because they are difficult to fix. Side streets generally are pretty quick, they tend to be on wooden poles, which you don't have underground wiring situations because, as I've explained before, when you have metal poles, all the wiring is underground. So sometimes it can be just a bulb with the photo cell, it can be the entire fixture, pretty straightforward to fix, but if it's, if it's a wiring problem, it's gonna take, take longer. Sweets to Circle and those areas, there's shared responsibility between us and the DCR. I can guarantee you that those problems are on the DCR's side. We only own the light, we only own the, the wire. They own the base and the conduit. I've gone through that, I've seen, like, those lights get hit, you've probably seen the bases get tipped. We can't do anything until those bases are fixed. We have, this is not a, a problem just in Everett, it's a problem we have in all DCR roadways. They're getting better in terms of coordinating with us to make those repairs. I, I'll look into those specific pole numbers, but I do know, you know, since Friday, we've fixed upwards of 50 lights, which I apologize that, that many are out on those main streets, but we are patrolling those, those streets. But as far as Sweets to Circle, I'll check to see. And if it is, if they are DCR, which I think they are, we'll just ask them if they can speed up their repair. Because as soon as they fix the base, then we can go out there and put the new light on.
And going forward, what's the best way to approach it? Is it to call you? Is there a different way we should go?
Well, the, the, the best way really is to call into customer service, that gets it right into the system.
Okay.
All right? They usually ask for the pole number, or you can go online, you know, either way.
I always thought that, I always thought that the municipal employees were to call you directly as liaison.
They can, you can.
Whatever, whatever's gonna work the fastest is what I care about.
Okay. Well, generally, the fastest would be, well, generally, if it's a light, like, you know, a real safety concern and so forth, I always, if you need it fixed that night, usually that's when I can, you know, influence that. But if it's something that can go through the system, on, on a side street, I encourage you to put it through the, put it through the system. But on main roads, because we're having these issues, you can send them to me.
Okay.
All right? And those are the Broadway, Main Street, Chelsea Street, and Ferry Street.
Okay. And, and I know that, I've, I've heard lights and poles, double poles, from colleagues time and time again. I didn't get my feelings hurt, but two phone calls from, from an individual talking about outlights, there should be a return call.
Yeah. I apologize.
I've got, I've got this list, I will give this to you before you head out, and I'll yield the floor. I do appreciate you coming in.
Okay.
Have you all done, Counselor? Counselor through? Counselor Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cameron, in the past, I've, I've been here for a while, one phone call, change a light bulb, no problem. What has changed? The last couple of years, it's just, something has changed where we just can't get things done. What is the reason for that?
There's a lot of work. I will say that we're, we're extremely, extremely busy. Some of the, even some of the rules have changed. For instance, if we pull up and a, and a car is parked under a light, we no longer can have it fixed because we've had stuff dropped and, and-
So maybe a little communication with the city of Everett? If you're, if you're planning to change a light bulb at a certain pole, call city services or call the mayor's office, and we can put a sign there, please do not park here.
And we've, and we've, we've actually done that in, well, we've done it here as well, but we've done that in other cities as well. We've had, you know, the only solution is to have the area con, you know, coned off so that we can, you know, fix it safely.
And the other, the other question I have, because I'm really getting very disgusted, to be honest with you. I, I, you know, our constituents get very upset when they keep calling us in one month and two months and three months and four months and five months, the light bulb doesn't get changed and it's still dark on the street. They get very upset at us. They think it's us not doing our job. They think we're not calling you. They think we're not calling the mayor's office. So even the double poles in the city, there's a, there's thousands of them. And I understand the process you have to go through. I understand that you have to put up a new light pole, and then you have to wait for cable, you have to wait for Comcast, you have to wait for this person and that person. I understand the process. But to me, I think that National Grid should put a plan together and say, okay, this is the issue we're having, this is the problem we're having, this is how many poles we have in the city of Everett, let's come up with a plan, let's come up with a date, and let's get these done. So I would appreciate if you could do something like that. Give me a plan, if there's a double pole on whatever, on Broadway, and I call you on it, I shouldn't have to call you on it, you should have a list of every double pole that is in the city of Everett. Keep me up to date, tell me you're gonna change it in six months, six years, one year, two years, hopefully, hopefully it's not six years. But give me a date on it, and let me know when these poles are gonna come down. Because if I, if I don't have any more communications, I am personally not gonna approve anything else from National Grid when they come up here. I will refuse to approve anything at all because it's not fair to us, it's not fair to, to our taxpayers, and it's not fair to our people that, you have no problem going up on the electric bill. The, the rates keep going up, but the service becomes less and less. It's uncalled for, and I apologize, I'm taking this out on you because you're very good, and I really appreciate you coming here tonight, but unfortunately, you are the spokesperson for National Grid, and I want you to relay that to them. Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon.
Good evening, Mr. Cameron. Through you, Mr. President, Mr. Cameron. Could you just relay the customer service number and what they have to do to explain to the people of Everett, what they have to communicate with you to actually get a light pole?
Okay.
Fixed, or actually get a, a, a light fixed?
Right, there's two, the, the phone number to call is 1-800-322-3223. And that operates between 8:00 and 8:05 every day. You can also go online, www.nationalgrid, all one word, dot com. And on the front page, on the first page, you can, you know, migrate your way, I think it's a couple of clicks, you can get to report a street light out.
And do they have to give the pole number?
Yeah, the, the information we like is, you know, address and pole number.
Okay. And also now, going on the double pole issue, I know it's just not National Grid that's on there, I know it's Comcast, I know it could be Everett, it could be a number of people that are on that pole. How can we coordinate with the other people that are on the pole to actually take them down so that we can get all the poles, the double pole issues taken out at once?
What I would suggest, because, you know, we are, we are the custodian in the city of Everett, as you know, but we're also the first ones to transfer. We do have, as my colleague tonight was here earlier for a petition, we are, you know, phasing out the Glendale substation, which is, which is a good thing. But because of that, those circuits are now going out onto some overhead lines that currently don't have the capacity. So that's prompted a lot of new poles to be set. They're stronger, you know, they're, just because of the capacity, but also they're, they're better weathering storms. So that's the good side. What I would suggest is that maybe, maybe not a full council, maybe one of your committee meetings, I'm not sure which committee it falls under, public safety or whatever, is that you have all four entities attend that meeting, and we all, that way they're all around the table and work out a plan. We'll have the list, and we can work out a plan. I, I can guarantee you that we don't have a lot to transfer, and, you know, but we set the pole, we transfer, and then we turn it over to Fire Alarm, Comcast, Verizon.
I know there's a different, there's various groups that are on the pole, I understand that.
But I'd say get all four companies together, I mean, three companies in the city.
Could you provide that?
Yes, yes.
Who's on the poles to us so that we would have that in context?
And we could actually put it into maybe a committee as a whole if we have to, or something to that effect, so that everyone's here so that we can have this all done. Yeah. Because there are a number of poles that are double polled, there, there are a number of lights that are out. I, I feel with my colleague from Ward 1, we've been discussing it, I've discussed it with a few other of my colleagues, and it's becoming an issue. When it becomes a public safety issue to where people are actually, you know, making crime happen because of the lighting situation, it's a problem. So we need to address that, and we need to address it, like, readily. So if you could provide us or our clerk, before you leave tonight, with the other individuals that are on the poles for the double polling, and then maybe we could actually call for a, a committee as a whole on that to invite everyone all together so that we could actually get that done. It, it seems like a, a reasonable request.
You know, Counsel, if, if I could just interfere for a minute, the chance of us getting poles replaced on the winter are gonna be very slim and none. I'd be very happy if we concentrate getting it lit, and then if you want to do your council in the whole, you know, in March or something, that's probably the time we should organize a plan. But right now, we should be getting our poll numbers, and let's get them submitted over there, and let's get the streets lit up, and that's the important thing.
Okay, so right now, the number to call would be 1-800-322-3223. And then give the poll number and an address, and then-
And nearest intersecting street as well, if you have that.
And then, and, and intersection street or something to that effect. Okay. All right, so that's, that's a suggestion to get the, the lights fixed for now until the winter breaks, and then we can go after the double pole issue.
Correct.
Counselor Hallen.
Thank you.
Counselor Hallen.
Sorry to go back to the original thing we were talking about, which were the lights. I'm not sure if you're aware that we have a street cleaning ordinance in the city of Everett, and that requires that one, one side of the street be vacated of all vehicles on a certain night of the week. It might help you if you were to get in touch with the city, find out what those streets are. Almost every street is one night a week, and a lot of the side streets are like one night every two weeks. There are very, very few streets that one ways, that park on one side that don't change. But it would be a, a boon to you guys if you could say, well, go out on Main Street because we know there's no parking there on Thursday nights on the right-hand side, no parking on Monday night.
So that includes all those, at least even the four main streets that I, you know.
Yeah, all the main streets are that way, okay? So just a comment.
Yep.
Gentlemen, this matters before you, Mr. Cameron.
Excuse me, Cusper, thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me, Cusper, thanks.
Refer back to sponsor.
Yeah.
Motion made, refer back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion made, the piece we refer back to sponsor. Clerk, read item number five.
Item number five is an order sponsored by Councilor McCasey that the chief of chairman officers hereby granted permission to accept and dispose of described list of 18 vehicles referenced inventory is knowing in need as the vehicles be on repair and no longer in use. Once declared surplus by the honorable city council, inventory will be sold by public auction.
Counselor Hallen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I viewed the list, and they all sound like just junk. I don't know if there's any value to them at all, and I'm sure if there is, it's in scrap, so without any further ado, just move favorable action.
Second motion.
Except the communication.
Motion made second, favorable action, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, roll call vote. Counselor, yeah, Counselor, clerk, please read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delissola?
Yes.
Counselor Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hallen?
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal?
Yes.
Counselor McCasey?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor McCasey?
Yes.
Nine years? Zero, nine years, zero yet.
Mr. Chairman.
No.
If not, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the communications on item number five.
Most made to accept the communication on the piece we just passed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, could we please suspend rules, take item number eleven? There's a woman waiting here.
We have a roll call on number five, which the order has passed, we read, okay.
Yes, someone's in the audience.
Would you suspend rules on which piece?
On number eleven, please.
Most made, and second to suspend the rules, to take item number eleven?
Item number eleven is an order sponsored by Council Mike Maccasie, is present petition for second-class motor dealer license from Malcolm De Lima, present DBA Everett Auto Brokers, 152 Ferry Street.
Is this a new license?
It's a new license.
Refer to license, Mr. Chairman.
Second on that, please. Most made, second, refer to item number eleven to license, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Item number twelve is the same petition.
Make a motion, would suspend the reading, take item number twelve, and for motion to refer to the committee on licenses.
Most made, suspend the reading, and send to the committee on license, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
And item, and number nine is the new...
Number nine, and number ten is also, isn't it?
Item number nine.
Oh, number nine, number nine.
It's a new license as well.
Same motion, Mr. Chairman. Second to favorable action, I mean, to refer to committee.
Most made, second, refer to number nine to...
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we can waive the reading, so if we just restrict it to what's on the calendar.
Okay. Item number nine is an order sponsored by Michael Maccasie, is present, second-class motor dealer license for Squale to Disco the Third, Mel services at eighty Tremont. Eleven is Malcolm De Lima, present DBA Everett Auto Brokers, 152 Ferry Street, second class, and a second-class motor at 353 Third Street, also Malcolm De Lima, DBA Boston Auto Brokers.
Are these all, are these all the license? Are these all the license?
Yes, all new. Refer to committee on the community and business development.
Okay, so we already referred eleven to twelve. So most made, second, refer item number nine to license, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, as we refer to licensed committee.
Rule, take item number ten.
Item number ten is an order sponsored by Council Maccasie, is present petition for permitting awning from George Aguiar, DBA Super McConnell Latino at 458 Broadway.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Counsel, Counsel DeFlorio.
I know the petitioner is in the audience, but it, we have a picture?
Is it the color, crimson red?
Okay, I have, I have no problem.
Second motion. Most made, second for favorable action, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, hold it, roll call.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McCasey.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Maccasie.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero neas, Mr. President.
The petition is passed, beautiful awning, get it set up right away.
Item number seven is an order sponsored by Council Maccasie, is present to accept a donation of $2,000 from ExxonMobil Corporation to the City of Everett Police Department K-9 account.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Accept the communication and place on file.
Most made, accept the communication, place on file. Now move for favorable action on this, and a letter of thanks be presented to ExxonMobil. All in favor? Our roll call, excuse me.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Maccasie.
Yes.
Mister Counselor McKinnon, sorry.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero neas, Mr. President.
The order has passed, accept a very generous donation. Clerk, read item number...
Item number eight is an order sponsored by Council Michael Maccasie, is present to accept a donation totaling $200 from the Eagle Bank to support the officer's human services adult learning program account.
Accept the communication, place on file.
Second. Most made, second, accept the communication, place on files, and a letter of thank you.
Favorable action.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Maccasie.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero neas, Mr. President.
The order has passed.
Mr. Chairman, could we please take items twenty-one, suspend rule and take item twenty-one?
Most made to suspend rules, take item number twenty-one, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, clerk, read item twenty-one.
Item number twenty-one, resolution sponsored by Council Rosa DeFlorio, that the administration consider looking at parking meters that people could pay with AKM card similar to what other cities and towns have installed.
Mr. Chairman, could we please have Richard Vizque up?
Yes, most made to have Mr. Vizque come before us, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Don't move too quick, I'll tell you that.
He's tired.
Tired.
I'm sorry to keep you here this long, Mr. Vizque.
Counselor.
In regards to the meters, I know I spoke with you just before the meeting started. Can you explain how it works and the pricing? I believe you have all that for us.
Sure. I previously, to come in Everett, I worked in Salem, and we put these types of meters out to bid, and just for pricing purposes, there's different types of meters that accept credit cards. They have the multi-space parking meters that you see maybe downtown, they go up and they service about ten spots on the street. They could service more in parking lots and such, and those machines typically go for about twelve, thirteen thousand dollars apiece. Again, they service more than one spot. There's also single-space parking meters that accept credit cards, and those were about five hundred and fifty dollars apiece. So they sit on the pole, you might see them in Boston, they're silver meters, they accept credit cards and coins, so those are two options I had. I know Chief of Staff also did some research on various types, but these particular ones, we put them out to bid, and we got bids on them, and they all kind of fell around that price range. I know there's certain payment options, lease options for them, but that's the wholesale price for them.
If we did something like this, obviously, I mean, you can't do the whole city, we don't have really that many meters, but it would be too much of a cost at one point, so probably the smart thing to do is just do the parking lots, start with the parking lots in the city.
Yeah, I mean, we can put out, we can do some research on what areas that would be most beneficial and put them in. I know the parking meters on the streets are in fairly decent condition, so I don't know about replacing those right away, but certainly is the way of the future to get out of carrying a park full of change, especially if parking meters are a couple hours in there, quarter or fifteen minutes. A lot of people don't have three, four dollars in change on them, so you find that these credit card machines are really becoming popular now.
It's, you think it would bring in more revenues with the credit cards than with money?
Yeah, I think they bring in more money because of certain aspects of them, especially in parking lots, if someone pays for a spot for three hours and they pull away, there's nothing really that designates that there's still money in those meters, so other people might come in and rebuy that spot, so to speak. There's certain technology that actually, if a cop pulls out of a spot, it'll reset the meter to zero, so there's, there's a lot of options with these meters if you buy them on how to, I guess, help pay for them.
Okay, I'm sorry, I would also like to invite Melissa, because she also did a research on this, and I'd like also to hear from her.
Second to invite Mr. Murphy on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, good, how are you? So the second type of process that you could go through if we chose to, which is that you put it out to bid, and basically, in the specifications, ask for the company to give you the meters or the standing room meter for free, and then they charge a convenience fee on the credit card.
And that would be a convenience fee forever, not...
Right.
Right.
It would go on, well, it would go on, we can only sign three-year contracts, so it would go on for three years, and then we'd have to revisit it. Another option that's out there, and right now Boston is, is doing a trial period with it, I'm not sure on what area, I think the BAC Bay, is a new phone app, it actually requires no equipment. What happens is you go, you park in the spot, you fill it up on your app, on your phone, you pay for your parking spot, and the company equips the meter people with software that allows them to see if the spot's taken or not. That's actually no fee for the city, but we'd have to go visit for that as well, because it's not sole source, but it is another option. As far as the, what meters are more used, if, share a secret with you, but the red-headed ones are actually the high turnover meters, and the white-headed ones are actually the low turnover meters. So there is a system in place where we could technically start with just the red ones. So if you look at front of City Hall, they're red, but if you go on the side street, they're white. So that's something we could try to start.
Well, like Richard said, a lot of the meters are new, so I wouldn't want to spend money, throw money away, but so if we started with the, just the parking lots, or maybe just the red ones, like you said, and keep those for replacements on the other ones, we don't have to do all of it at once, because I understand there's an expense. So we could do a couple for trial period and see how much more, if it brings in more revenues, then you could, we could go on forward and do more, but...
We're about to pave Corey Street parking lot. I don't know if it'll get done for the winter, but if not, it'll be beginning of the spring, is it our current plan? So that may be a good place to start, since we're already going to be paving there anyway.
Right, and then you give rid of all those poles in the parking lot, so you give rid of a lot of mess, and that might be the best way to do it. So I'm gonna, if you could send it out to bid and let me know how much that would cost for the parking lot, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can we also, when you come back with the price, also find out how much we took in, in that area, for meters, so that we can see if it's cost-effective?
I would like to ask them how long they needed to do this, but this is something that we need to know right away, so if I give them a month? Okay, nice Christmas gift. So the second meeting in December is, what date is that? Sorry.
The eighteen and fourteen, it'll be the twenty-second.
Month.
So is that what you want, you want for the...
Well, the twenty-second, if they need more time, we'll just give them more time.
So our motion is to, so if you want favorable action and refer... Send it to the December twenty-second meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So we refer to the December twenty-second meeting. He's not, clerk, what, what number we...
Number thirteen.
Clerk, read item...
Item number thirteen, order sponsored by Council John Hanley, Committee on Business and Community and Business Development Report on Order Petitioning the Great General Court to allow the City of Everett to increase the fee for lodging house licenses with a recommendation for favorable action.
Accept the committee report and place on file.
Accept the committee report and place on file, all in favor? I oppose. On the, on the order?
Mr. Chairman, on the order? Did anyone on the committee that are here, did they possibly discuss who would be increasing the fee? We're asking Massachusetts to allow us to increase the fee, but who actually would be increasing the fee? Is it this board? Is it the council?
Only we can, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Sani.
When was the last time we raised fees?
We've never raised this fee, this is set by state statute, which is why we're asking the General Court to allow us to. The current fee is fifty dollars a year.
And how long has that been?
Oh, my goodness. I can, yeah. Precedes me.
Thank you.
So what do we have here? Do we have a motion for... Most made, for second, for favorable motion and second favorable action, roll call vote?
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero neas, Mr. President.
We have accepted the committee report, now, is that, was that the proper motion on this? We accepted the committee report?
Yes, and then favorable action.
And then favorable, we accept the committee report already?
Yes.
And now favorable action on this piece right here?
We already did it.
But where is this going? This doesn't come along now? It goes to, it goes to the General Court, okay. So we accept the petition, send to General Court.
Item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen, order sponsored by Council John Hanley, Committee on Business, Community and Business Development Report, and an order petitioning the Great General Court to allow the City of Everett to set its own rates for second-class motor vehicle licenses with a recommendation for favorable action.
Sir, committee report, place on file.
Second.
Most made to accept the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, on the order?
Favorable action.
Most made, second for favorable action, clerk, roll call.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Maccasie.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero neas, Mr. President.
Well, the order has passed, and we'll send to the General Court.
Item number fifteen is a car, order sponsored by Council Michael Maccasie, is present Committee on Business and Development Report on Petition for Precious Metal License from Adalia Flores, DBA All Checks Cash at 1998 Rev. Parkway to purchase scrap gold only. No resale, no silver or other metal to be bought, with a recommendation, favorable action for a one-year trial basis.
Sir, committee report, place on file.
Second.
Most made to accept the committee report.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Most made, favorable action. Accept the roll call, roll call.
What's that? Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, through you to our clerk. The sale, the gold that is purchased by them, is this the same thing as if it were jewelry, where they have to keep it for so many days, and report it to the police and so forth?
Yes, everything must be kept with a log, and the police have the right at any time to enter the premises and look at it.
And we have a one-year license, in the event there's any infractions, we can pull it, that's all.
It's a trial period for one year, so... It's a one-year license, any...
Yep. Most made, and second for favorable action, clerk, read the roll call, please.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Maccasie.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero neas, Mr. President.
The order has passed, and good luck if one of...
Chairman, parliamentary inquiry? Items, where the heck was they?
Sixteen, seventeen.
Items sixteen and seventeen, are they the same items as, where the heck was it? Did they do these already? Oh, that was a six o'clock meeting, okay. So whether it's not back now?
Item number sixteen is an order sponsored by Council Maccasie, is present Committee on Ways and Means Report on Transfer of $125,000 from Assessors Overlay Surplus Account into Assessors Professional Services Account. Transfer will fund personal property audits and commercial industrial appraisals.
You got a transfer, friend?
That was before us, in the committee?
Yes.
And the committee referred it out?
Yes. Favorable.
We're in the same rule as holding items, as we are in the council? We gotta wait three days or two days, do you understand that rule for committees?
No.
This is always done to committee, right?
Right.
I just want to make sure things are done right, that's all.
No, we don't, no, we don't coun, counsel.
So that, what they did tonight is acceptable to be, okay.
Yes.
Okay. You guys do that, yeah?
Favorable action on the order, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Most made, second for favorable action, now clerk, read the...
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Maccasie.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero, nine yeas, zero neas.
The order has passed, the transfer of $125,000 to the overlay surplus account.
Number seventeen is an order sponsored by Council Michael Maccasie, is present Committee on Ways and Means Report to transfer $125,000 from the Assessors Overlay Surplus Account to City Services Playground Update Maintenance Account. Transfer will continue the renovation of city's parks and tot lots, recommendation for favorable action.
Second to committee report.
Most made, second, accept the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Favorable action.
Second. Second, favorable action, roll call vote?
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Maccasie.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero neas.
The order has passed, the transfer of $125,000 for the Assessors Overlay Surplus Account, the city's management playground updates.
Item number twenty is an order sponsored by Council Michael Maccasie, is present to amend the ordinance to the City of Everett by adding new section, section seventeen, seventeen dash six A, removal of snow and ice from sidewalks.
We do eighteen on that?
We missed eighteen on that.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Jay Markhart and Melissa Murphy.
Wish made to lay this over for two weeks, right, Mr. Markhart and Ms. Murphy?
Yes, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. It'll be laid off for two weeks. Clerk, read item number 20.
Item number 20 is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez, his present to amend the ordinance to the city of Everett by adding new section, section 17 dash 6A, removal of snow and ice from sidewalks.
That's managed for you, Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wish made.
This, this piece has been bounced all over the place. I had sent out a last revision to everyone, I think everyone's had a chance to look at it, I hope. Believe it or not, I'm not a huge fan of the piece, although I spent a ton of time on it, I know the committee as a whole has spent a lot of time on it, Melissa's spent a lot of time on it. I've, I've worked it, I know this body's worked it as much as we can to try to foster public safety and minimize the exposure of the homeowners. We don't know if it's going to be successful or not, we're gonna give it a shot, it's in the interest of public safety, so as amended by way of the first, last piece that we all have, I would ask for favorable action on it.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Any regards to the ordinance, we don't have the actual piece in front of us of what we're voting on, this just says a snow ordinance.
Well, we had it before, I'm not gonna, no.
We had the snow ordinance in front of us, but we don't have the changes.
Well, it says the adding of the new section, and then it was sent out by email. If, if any of the members haven't had a chance to look at it, I've got no problem holding off until everyone has a chance to look at it, but I thought that there would be, I sent it out probably about a week and a half ago. But if there's any questions or any concerns, by all means, I'll sit back, otherwise, I would ask for favorable action.
I don't have any, my only.
Let me, let me do this one, Counsel Polatano.
Thank you, I did read the revision, could you just give us like the high points? I realize it's a large document.
Sure.
Perhaps we can, we can get enough information to be able to move ahead.
Sure.
The high points like the.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, they're in the process of, yeah, so, yes.
I also read the revision, the, the problem that I have, and also that Counsel Rosa has, is the revision legally in front of us, because it has not been presented to us. I mean, it was, it was some good work down on Counsel Capone's part, but, and it was sent to us by email, which I, which I did read, and I wrote, I did my own thing on it too, but that is not before us, and it has to be presented to us somehow, so.
Okay, so should we go back to Mr. Counsel Polatano, are you all through? Counsel Capone.
Whatever the wish of the body is, is fine with me, we had an amended, well, it's on the calendar, I did submit a copy of the revised version to all the counselors by email, and that's the piece as amended, is what I'm asking, so I'm asking the piece as amended. More than happy to go over the highlights, if that's the will of the body, more than happy to lay it on a table, so everyone can take their time and look at it, you know, it's, it's an important piece, it's not something that should be rushed, we have taken our time, and I think rightfully so, we are on the heels of winter here, so it's something that could come into play, but whatever the wish of the council is, is fine with me.
Do you want to lay it on the table for two weeks, next meeting? Is that, Counsel DeFlorio?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that that's gonna be a problem for two weeks, whether we pass, we haven't passed it in 10 years, so whether we pass it today or in two weeks, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, but I really would like to have, when I vote on something, I want a copy in front of me of what I'm voting for.
We have them on now, yeah, pop, take them off on there. All right, so why don't we just do this, so it's listed on the table for two weeks, let's have copies printed, all right, so you have in front of you, because I took it offline, I mean, it's, it's a good piece.
I, I agree with it.
Yeah.
I read it online, I, I agree with the piece, I'm gonna vote for it, even though I'm, it's something that I've never really wanted to vote on, but I think the committee has worked on so hard, and we did so much, especially Counsel Capone, and I believe we're gonna do a trial period, if it doesn't work out, we can always revisit it and take it away, but.
Okay, Counsel Sani.
If we already all read it, and we all see the revised, I think we should vote on it as a trial base, and let's move forward so we can notify the residents, so we can stop moving forward, because we're gonna have snow within a month, I believe, so, or sooner, so I don't think we should be laying it over the table, I think we all read it, we all know it's revised, and Counsel Capone sent it all out to us, and let's vote yes or no, and put it on a trial.
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Hanlon.
We'd be setting a dangerous precedent on doing something like this, of accepting something that we can vote on that is not legally set before us, and I understand a lot of work has been on it and so forth, but, you know, it's okay for snow removal, maybe, but what are you gonna do about the budget next year, or something else, or something else, or something else, should not do it, Mr. Chairman, this should be referred back to our counselor, our counselor should take and submit it to our clerk, as part of it, and make an amendment to this thing, and the next week it comes along, and we vote for the amendment, we vote for the audit, simple as that. Don't, don't, don't do something that's not, not legally before us.
Counsel McKinnon.
I agree with Mr. Hanlon, Mr. Hanlon had put on a piece before, he would like to have everything basically in black and white before us, before we take a look and vote on it, so I agree with him, so if we could get that done and just lay it over for two weeks, I don't see the big issue there.
Counsel Capone.
And, and that's fine, the, as I said from the very beginning, whatever the counselor wishes to do, I would just beg to differ that it is legally in front of you, if it was presented to the body as, as amended, it's legally before you. Got no issue holding it on the table, more than happy to do it, it's gonna give everybody a last chance, take a look at it, make sure we didn't miss anything, because it is a big deal, it's gonna impact the residents, so we want to make sure we do it right, so I would move that we lay this on the table to our next meeting.
Wish made, second to lay this piece for two weeks on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, clerk has been laid on for two weeks.
Item number 23.
This is.
Resolution sponsored by Counsel Stevens, the mayor and city solicitor, if you can get an update on the land dispute on the old Monts, not the site.
Due to the sponsor, not, yeah.
Wish made, the motion there would be to lay it to the November 24th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, refer it to the 24th meeting.
Item number 24 is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Cynthia Sani, Rosa DeFlorio, to request the owner of the Gateway Shopping Plaza to appear at the next meeting to government operations, public safety, public service, relative to procuring private traffic details on weekends and holidays due to continuous problems with traffic congestion in that area.
Counsel Sani. Counsel Rosa.
Thank you.
DeFlorio, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to invite the managers of the mall, and I would also like to invite, who would be the person that takes care of the details, would that be the chief, who do they call in for detail placement?
Police traffic.
Traffic, the police traffic.
Yeah.
Detail, just refer to the detail officer. Refer to detail officer, and also have somebody come up there from there, because the mall promised us detail cops, now they're telling us that they're calling the detail department, the detail office, and they can't get a detail car, so I want them both here together, if it's possible, thank you.
Motion made to have the manager, if we could get the manager of the Gateway Shopping Plaza to appear before us the next meeting, the 24th.
The 24th, yes, no, 24th, yes, and also.
If you want, send it to the public.
Excuse me.
I, I believe that the best thing to do, I'm sorry, is to send this to a committee, we don't want to take up a whole, a meeting of.
Okay, so what do you want to do with this now, want to change that over?
No, sir, my second. What committee do you want us to assist? As read, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, as read, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna send this to a committee, and we want the manager to appear, and also the, the guy, the person who's in charge of detail officers at the police department.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, this is, send the committee.
Item number 25, resolution sponsored by Counsel Cynthia Sani, MBTA Sign Division Replacements Signs on Main Street between Prescott Street and Baldwin, due to there being missing pole location and cause of parking illegal.
Counsel Sani.[1548.41]